All right. On roll call, Mr. Bartlet.
Here.
Mrs. Brownite.
Here.
Ms. Gelba.
Here.
Ms. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. York.
Here.
Me. Here. As you know, Bill had surgery today, so I am sitting in for him tonight. Be nice. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. I need a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
On roll call, to approve the minutes. Mr. Bartlet. Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Mrs. Gelba.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
And I abstain because I missed that meeting. Our second order of business is to... There was a special council meeting that night as well, and I need a motion to approve the minutes for the tax budget hearing. Does everybody have a chance to read them?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Did you have a question?
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, it's yours.
Okay. On roll call, Mr. Bartlet.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Gelba.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
And I also abstain because I wasn't there for that meeting either. Moving on to communications, we have our report from Police TV Heinz. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Chief?
No. The only thing I would add is not about the report, just a report that we started the Safety Village this morning with Mandy Roehall and some volunteers over at the elementary school, and that we're excited. The kids were excited this morning. Officer Romano was talking to them about bicycle safety and crosswalk safety. And then on Thursday, Dasty and K-9 handler Kurtz will do a K-9 presentation, and they always love that. And so, just excited for them and glad to partner with Mandy and the parents over there and have a good week for the kids.
Yeah, it's a good program. I've been volunteering.
You were there last?
This is my third year. Yeah, I'm on for tomorrow and...
Oh, okay.
So, I'll be over there. All right.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, on the numbers, so the drug abuse is up sort of a fair amount. Is that, like, related to the K-9?
You know, it's... Yeah. The... We're seeing a... We're seeing methamphetamine coming back pretty heavily, but the numbers are up, Mr. Bartlet, due to the K-9, which is a good thing. And Matt and Dasty are doing a phenomenal job. Matt's doing a great job with the dog here in the village and also helping other agencies on the east side here with drug seizures and also with tracking people. Dasty does a really good job. Matt and Dasty with both of those. So, yeah, that's... I attribute the numbers being up to the K-9.
Okay. Good. Good to see.
Thank you.
He was a good boy.
He is a good boy, except for when he's not supposed to be a good boy.
And then Assistant Chief Copeland is not here tonight. Do you have anything to comment, Rick, on the...
I do not. Captain Henderson was going to come up in case anybody had questions, but they're out on a run right now, and he just...
I heard the bell.
...texted and said that they wouldn't... He wouldn't be able to come up. But if there's any questions, maybe I can answer. If not, then, you know, if you can get ahold of Captain Henderson or Dan later in the week. I mean, the only thing I saw that jumped out to me is obviously the run volumes up quite a bit from last year. I think we're up about 70 runs this time. Actually, Captain Henderson just came in.
There he is.
But, yeah, the runs are up, 70 runs from where we were at last year, so they're busy, that's for sure.
Do you have anything to add to the fire report? He was just kind of going over real quickly that the runs were up.
It's got back and forth runs, so...
That's what I thought. I heard the bell. I heard the bell.
Okay.
And then, moving on to the building department report. Rod, do you have anything you want to elaborate upon?
There's nothing to add to your wondering. It was just relatively normal.
Further in communications, there was a letter from Esther Osman, who I think lives in Jordan Park.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I skipped over the tax department.
Okay.
Okay. Money's up. That's good. That's good. Trend is continuing. All right. And then, moving on to Esther Osman, and Joanie already has discussed this with Bill. So, the area in front of Roosters needs a tree, and Bill is taking care of that. And then, from Douglas Glover, a letter dated June 28th. Do I need to go...
I'm sorry. That's already been taken care of?
He's taking care of it.
So, getting a tree planted, basically?
Yes.
But there are 20 other places that look just like that around the village.
Well, your Tree Commission is coming up with a plan.
So, I think we ought to follow the plan. I mean, I think part of the reason that we're behind is because we keep reacting instead of strategically looking at what we want to do.
And this may fit into that plan. I don't know.
I think he was going to contact them to see what their recommendations were.
The Tree Committee?
Yes.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that we strategically look at what we're doing instead of simply reacting, you know, on demand, because I think that's kind of why we're a little behind now, because we keep doing that.
Well, it's been two years.
Well...
This has been two years.
It's been three years that there's not a tree up in front of Waldorf.
Marcy, you can speak to it. But I do think the Tree Committee at least has identified the types of trees that should go where, if not a replacement plan.
We're in the process of doing that. We've done... The Tree Committee, and I had asked the chairman to come in here and we'll... Probably next month, I've asked Kristen Van Scoey to come in and let you know the entire scope, but it's not as simple as just choosing a tree, because what... First thing you have to do is survey the whole environment. Are there sidewalks? Are there overhead power lines? How wide is the tree line? And you do what's called an urban site index, and you... There's a whole scale where you look at the soil, you look at all those conditions, and you score it. And the strategy is you want to choose the largest, least hardy tree, which is counterintuitive, that will fit in that spot. So, the Tree Committee has been surveyed, all six districts, but, you know, basically five volunteers have done all that work. That is complete. And last Friday, we met and started with Wendy Van Buren, who's from the ODNR, and started choosing trees so that there is a plan in place for replacement of trees. Now, whether there's money for that, that's not necessarily. But, you know, I have emphasized, I thought it would be nice for somebody to... From the Tree Commission, other than myself, to come in and fill you guys in on all the work that has been done. So, we didn't meet in August, so I anticipate that maybe in September at one of our council meetings.
That'd be really helpful.
Because, you know, and I've been peripherally involved, but Mary Beth York, Kristen Van Scoey, and Barb Whitaker have done the lion's share of, you know, all over the village and learning and sometimes surveying these sites and then resurveying them because, you know, we were novices and we're learning. So...
Well, I think that's all the... I think that's a good reason why, to Randy's point, that we ought to touch base with you guys, the Tree Committee, and say, hey, what...
Yeah.
Because it should go through you guys to say, what's the right tree to put here, given all the other work we've done and things like that.
Right. Right. And so, we have... We didn't get through all the streets, but we got... We good at least three districts, if not four, on Friday, just with recommendations for trees. So... And we're keeping in mind a lot of different things, including, you know, we don't want a situation where we've got all maples in the village and then some, you know, new pest comes and attacks maple trees. So, we're trying to create biodiversity, but also, one of the tenants of urban tree-scaping, if you will, is since we don't have an arborist on staff, to keep them in groups. So, like, in one area, like along Center Street, we'll recommend, when those trees fail, one type of tree, so that it's more efficient monetarily if you would need to take out trees or if a disease would hit. So... And, yeah, I put that to them in July, and then we didn't meet in August. So, I anticipate...
Yeah, I think it'd be great. I think we'd be great to hear back from you guys.
Yes.
And if you can help make sure that this is also in... It sounds like Bill may have already reached out to them, but just make sure this is in the plan as well, this specific spot.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I don't know that we were going to... Yeah. Okay. All right. And then, do I need to go over this other letter?
Just read.
Okay. There's a letter from Douglas Glover Hoover dated July... June 28th regarding consent legislation, snow and ice.
Can... Marcy, really quickly, what was your... It feels like there was... You had a finishing thought on Esther's request. Do you think that we didn't... The Tree Committee maybe didn't cover that district?
I don't know that it's the Tree Committee's purview to prioritize where trees go. You know, I think that that's... I think there's somewhat some subjectivity to that, and I...
Gotcha.
In my personal opinion, I would think that a location on the square is important.
Yeah.
So... And also, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and that's part of it. And then, we also have homeowners who...
Yeah.
Want us to replace trees in the tree lawn, but they want us to buy the tree that they want, not the tree that... Not necessarily the tree that they're recommending. So... And they want this many, and, you know... So, the plan is a guide. It's not, in my opinion, you know, written in stone. It's a guide.
Okay.
So... All right. Permission to address council. Do we have anyone who would like to address council? Yes. Did I skip over you?
No, you didn't.
Okay.
This is new, so I was trying to get to you earlier, but I didn't. Sorry.
Okay.
So, last Monday, we had the public involvement meeting for the... The first of two for the multi... Sorry. Multi-pass alignment study. At that meeting, Mel Taylor from Columbia Township approached me about paving Berwick Avenue between Murray and Cambridge. It's one block. We share that with Columbia Township. It's a split corporation. She got money extra in her budget, so I wanted to bring it to council. I did call Mayor Brown about it. He was in favor of the cost would be $8,000 for us to add it to the current contract we have with J.K. Muir, and then we could split that in half with Columbia Township.
We could split $8,000 in half of that?
Right, because half the road is theirs. So, I kind of wanted to put it out to you guys. We were talking about this in Public Works about a year ago. This would be one of the streets we'd like to do whenever...
Cambridge between Berwick and...
Berwick Avenue between Murray and Cambridge.
Okay.
So, it's where the two new houses were built, where they tore down the one.
Next to my house.
Right.
I'm on the corner.
Did we have funds left?
I don't know. That's...
That was pretty close, I thought.
But, I mean, that's where... Richard had also said that if we needed to, we could always use the ARPA funds once we get the resolution passed for that.
Is there a timeline, or, I mean, you...
So, the work on the other streets is slated to start on Thursday, so I was kind of hoping to get a straw vote. I guess technically, the $4,000 we spent, I guess, is under the mayor's purview, but it's $8,000 for the contract, and we get reimbursed. So, I was looking if council's in favor of it, we'll go ahead and move it forward. We'll have to follow up with all the paperwork, because we've got to have an agreement with Columbia Township that they're going to pay us back and stuff like that, and we'll have to do that. It's all kind of last minute, but it's an opportunity. That cost for us is four, right? Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Four grand. Yeah.
So, the contract would be with the village of Merrimott, and then Columbia Township would reimburse us as opposed to vice versa?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Since we already got J.K. Muir coming in. We already got J.K. Muir coming in. It would... Exactly.
So, they're doing Bank Place?
Yeah. Bank Place, Mountain Way, and Mount Vernon, and then the square parking lot paving.
Okay.
And then the concourse has been added.
The concourse.
Yeah. So, this would be... If I can get it... If we approve it tonight, I can put it on their list, make sure that they want to do it. I mean, J.K. could tell us, no, we're committed, or something like that, but since they're not even in the village yet, and they're getting ready to start, it's pretty much perfect timing.
Right. Who got the figure? Who got the $8,000 figure?
That was my calculation.
Okay.
Driving the street, just length and width.
Okay.
So, it's... There's no curb on it. There's no sidewalk that leads to it, so it's really just the asphalt work, which makes it very palatable. Mel was actually asking about a section of Grove Avenue, which is much longer. We also split that corp, and I told Bill, I said, we should do that next year. We can bid it out. There's more work to do on that street.
Goes through the process.
It's longer. Yeah. I got to do some curb ramp design and stuff, so...
Okay.
But this one's pretty easy, so...
Well, I do have to say, since I live over there, it's a mess with all the trucks that were over there building the two new houses. There's potholes that are the size... Small children could fall and disappear into them. And it's not good.
Yeah. It's...
It's really bad.
So, do we need to do...
Was this... When was this on our list? Was this for next year? Because remember, it was, wasn't it?
I think it was further out than that, because we're talking about Hiawatha.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. This is one of those streets with a shared corp line. It was kind of like I was going to approach Columbia Township and say, when can you guys get it in? We'll try to work together. I would figure it'd take at least a year for them... For both of our budgets to work together to a point, and Monday night happened, and she was like, hey...
Now that's happened.
I've got money. I'm like, oh, well, let me ask. I don't know if we can pull it off, but...
But it was on the horizon for...
Yeah. It's within the next...
Okay.
Next three years. We were looking at this, next three years.
So, you just have to do a committee meeting to...
Well, but we added the concourse via this council meeting.
Yeah. I think, given the amount, we can just go ahead and move to do it.
Yeah. Since the net cost of the village is only $4,000, I think you can take a straw vote today, and if you guys think it's a good idea, just tell the mayor to go ahead and do it.
Yeah. That's my thoughts, exactly.
Okay.
So, all moved at... We move forward with sharing a paving contract for Berwick Avenue with Columbia Township.
Columbia Township, yep.
Second.
For $4,000. Not to exceed...
Net.
Net $4,000.
Net, net, net.
Right.
Mr. Bartlet.
Second. I second. Oh, you second.
I seconded, but that's okay. Randy felt like talking more.
Ms. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Gelba.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin.
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Hey. Motion to pay the bills. Really happy. Does anybody have any questions about the bills?
Now, pay the man, Leah.
John's not here, but I would... I'd be interested to find out for the next round of trees, because I know he talked about there's another round of trees, because there's some other dead trees and stuff like that around, when the next round would be. You know, he's rightfully so. He's sort of bunching the work together so that it's more cost-effective.
Right.
Just curious when he was gonna... When the next... The second round of Davy Tree... Treework was going to be.
Removal, you mean?
Yeah. There's some... Like, there's one right over by the parish center that's totally dead.
Yeah. I'm not sure about that.
So...
We're on the planting side, so...
Another coordination opportunity there.
Is John...
So, he's not here, so I was just curious, but...
May I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to pay the bills, Mr. Bartlet?
Yes. Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Gelba.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Miscellaneous.
Finance report. Yeah. One committee report.
Two committee reports.
Two committee reports.
The first one is...
Oh, yes.
Tony, would you like to?
Yes. So, from the Finance Committee regarding risk management insurance. The Finance Committee met on Friday, July 22nd, 2022, at 2:00 PM to discuss renewing the village's risk management insurance. Present at the meeting were Finance Committee Chair Rob Bartlet, Finance Committee Members Kelly Rankin and Marcy Lewis, Mayor Bill Brown, and Senior Administrative Assistant Joanie Van Pelt. The Finance Committee reviewed the proposal for risk management coverage from Highland. If we did not change any of the coverage levels in the plan, the village's costs would go from $35,383 in 2021 to $36,021 in 2022, an increase of $638 or 1.8%. Carrie Novels from Highland previously shared that the average increase in Ohio risk management insurance for municipalities this year was 6%. Ms. Novels also shared several areas where the coverage limit has been increased at no extra charge. The Finance Committee had previously benchmarked our coverage levels versus Fairfax, Terrace Park, Newtown, and Columbia Township, and we are in line with the other municipalities. As such, the Finance Committee agreed to maintain the current levels of coverage and deductibles. The Finance Committee recommends agreeing to the new updated coverage, and quote, "If council agrees with this recommendation," because the needs to... This needs to be passed via a resolution, and it needs to be effective by August 26th, 2020.
2022. Whoops.
2022. The legislation will need to be passed as an emergency measure at the first council meeting in August. Respectively submitted, signed by Rob Bartlet, Chair, Marcy Lewis, and Kelly Rankin.
Need a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Gelba.
Aye.
Ms. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next report is from Public Works.
Yay.
Yep. From the Public Works Service Committee regarding a recommendation for 2023 solid waste service. The Public Works and Service Committee met on July 22nd, 2022, at 2:30 PM to discuss solid waste and recycling service beginning in January of 2023. In attendance were Committee Chairperson Kelly Rankin, Committee Member Randy York, Committee Member Rob Bartlet, and Mayor Brown. The village participated in the SWORE, the Southwest Ohio Regional Refuge Consortium, for the provision of waste and recycling services in an RFP, along with five other communities. By participate... By participating in this program via the Center for Local Government, the village had hoped to obtain more favorable rates for the service. The rates provided by the bid were compared to the rates we would pay if we contracted directly with Rumpke. Our current year contract is for a total of 16.75 units per month for 1,425 units at $23,868.75 per month for all three services. The option year 2023 would increase rate 3% to 17.25 per unit per month for all three services. The three-year firm rate option with the Center for Local Government group bid is 18.9 for trash and recycling and 4.50 for yard waste for 20... Or 23.50 for all... 23.40 for all three services. So, the committee recommends renewing the contract with Rumpke for the service year 2023. Respectively submitted, signed by Kelly Rankin, Chairperson Randy York, and Rob Bartlet.
I need a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
On roll call.
I would, but as the chair, I probably shouldn't.
To approve the Public Works and Services Committee report regarding the renewal of Rumpke for 2023, Mr. Bartlet.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Gelba.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask Ed a quick question about this, then?
Sure.
Hey, Ed, so...
Can I say no?
Sure, you could always say no. This is just extending the current contract, so I don't... Resolution is not necessary, is it, then? Because it's not...
No, it's not, because I think the contract allowed us to extend it.
Right. There's actually two extensions allowed within the contract. So, I just wanted to check with you. No resolution required.
We just need to notify them.
You're 100% correct.
Yeah, yeah. But I just want to make sure this suffices, because it's already... The contract already exists.
Yeah.
Taking advantage of that option that's within the contract.
Before they change their mind.
I got a couple of great law clerks with Chris and Rob here, I don't have to do No, you're exactly right.
Okay, so I'll make sure.
Moving on to resolution.
I said, why can't we get a better rate?
Miscellaneous?
No, this is actually a steal what we got for extending the current one.
Well, yeah.
I'll report to them before resolution.
The boys are talking.
All right, in miscellaneous business, Safety Services Night Out will be August 16th, 2022, at the Bell Tower from 6:00 to 9:00. There will be a special meeting of council Monday, August 29th, at 5:30 PM to discuss the strategic planning session report summary. Now, moving on to resolutions.
First one, to renew current contract for the following kinds of insurance, real and personal property, comprehensive general liability, business automobile, and other coverages to pay premiums and to declare emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion is second to suspend the rules to allow second, third reading.
Second, third reading. What she said.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Mrs. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. And then we go ahead and have the second and third reading.
Yes, to renew current contract for the following kinds of insurance, real and personal property, comprehensive general liability, business automobile, and other coverages to pay premiums and to declare emergency.
Do you need a motion to disprove?
No, just any discussion?
Any discussion?
Then third reading.
So you've checked all this, the liability limits and deductibles, they're all considered, okay, cool.
That was in the report.
That's really good work, I mean, for 3%. No, this is 1.5. I mean, terrific.
Hats off to Carrie, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she was looking out for us.
Okay, all right, to renew current contract for the following kinds of insurance, real and personal property, comprehensive general liability, business automobile, and other coverages to pay premiums and to declare emergency.
Need a motion to approve the resolution? Adopt the resolution?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye.
No, we need a motion, a second, to invoke the emergency clause.
Now we need a motion, a second, to invoke the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. Right.
All right, next one.
The resolution has passed.
Next one, a resolution authorizing village to enter into easement agreement with Duke Energy and to declare emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the second and third readings.
So moved.
All in favor, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and do the second and third readings.
Resolution authorizing village to enter into easement agreement with Duke Energy and to declare emergency.
I don't know.
Is there any discussion? On those? Third reading.
Rod, do you have anything to add on this?
No, it's needed. Unfortunately, it's emergency, because I don't know if it was shared, they've been working with, Duke's been working with the school, thinking they school owned a piece of land next to the tennis courts, and they actually didn't. So we corrected the auditorium website, and now it comes back to the village, and they want to get it done before the school, a lot of the work before the school year starts. That's why it's, I guess, being done on an emergency basis.
Yeah, Rod, the only question I had about that was who negotiated that price? That bill?
I understand, and maybe Chris can understand more, I think that Duke misses some formula to come up with what they think is fair compensation.
Is that what it is?
Interesting, okay. I didn't.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just seed and straw, we're going to get $3,500 back, so.
Sounds fair.
Yeah.
Well, I have one quick question, is this where the, right by the tennis courts?
Correct.
Can someone go over there and up, the porta potty is laying on its side?
Yeah, I know Kevin from the maintenance group contacted Rumpke to get it uprated. That is theirs, and the contractor's supposed to uprate it.
That'd be nice.
I don't know, prank this week or what happened. And I have pictures of the plot, if anybody wants to, I don't know if you.
We have it.
You have a third reading?
Resolution authorizing village to enter into easement agreement with Duke Energy and to declare emergency.
Motion to adopt the ordinance or resolution.
So moved.
I can't do two.
Yes, you can. Second. Come on.
Second.
All right, Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then we need a motion to.
Second, to invoke the emergency clause.
Motion to invoke the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Help me out here. Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Mrs. Brownite.
Aye.
Ms. Galbaugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Rankin.
Aye.
Mr. York.
Aye.
Ordinance.
The motion is adopted. Resolution is adopted. Moving on to ordinances.
Okay, ordinance authorizing application and contracting with the Ohio Public Works
We had first reading, what the second reading and the next meeting?
Okay, next one, approval and granting consent to the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation Authority to apply, maintain, and repair standard longitudinal pavement markings and regulatory and warning signs on state highways inside village corporate limits, and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the village corporate limits, and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the village corporation.
This is the first reading, we'll have the second reading at the next council meeting. All right, moving on to the task list, I had two requests. First of all, Bill.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
There was a diversity resolution that, Ed, I think you forwarded on, but it didn't, is that?
Did you get it, Johnny?
I did not get one.
Didn't I send it to you? I thought I did.
Okay.
Did Richard send you the other one, too? There was that one for the ARPA funds.
I gotta tell you, Richard did, and I totally forgot about that one, that's on me, I totally forgot, so I have that for next one.
Okay, so there's two for next time.
Diversity, well, I sent it to you, didn't I?
You told, you replied and said it was good, and you were sending it on to be voted on for this council, or presented.
Remind me Monday, remind me.
I got it, okay.
Sorry about that. I thought it was well-written, too, I liked it.
Okay, I had two requests regarding the task list. First of all, Bill asked that, once again, we postponed it because he's not here, and second of all, Leah had asked to take, have some time to update us on some developments with the pool. So I'd like to hand it over to Leah to discuss that, and then.
Thank you.
We'll go on from there.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I have to warn you all now, if I start rambling, just give me a sign that I'm rambling, because this, this pool is a mess.
Should we close the door, is the language going to get tough, should we close the door?
No, I use my proper language and not any other than that. So, okay, I just want to start off by saying that we had a safety committee meeting last Thursday with the pool committee. Randy and Rob were both there, I thought it went really well, I think, we worked well with the committee, you know, just trying to decide what it is we want to do, there was, there was a lot of really good back and forth, and I think that we are going to be a good relationship moving forward. One of the things about the pool is that there's three entities that are kind of all supposed to be working together, the town, you know, the village council, the pool committee, and Cincinnati Pool Management, and I do believe that the communication between the three is not great, that needs to be worked on. I think we have failed a little bit in making sure we knew what was going on down at the pool. I don't think that the Cincinnati Pool Management Company has voiced any of the concerns or tried to repair a lot of the concerns, I think they've glossed over a lot of things and information that we didn't get. What happened was on Friday, I run the farmer's market, and I'm in contact with Tom Sterling, who is part of the Health Department, and he does the, basically comes and does the inspections of new vendors, and I had called him on Friday because I had a new vendor coming Saturday, and I needed someone to come check with the vendor. We were talking about that, and he asked me if I had heard about the pool, because he knows I'm on council, we've been working together for four years, and I said, well, what's wrong with the pool? And he said that two, they failed the inspection on Wednesday, and I said, I didn't know there was an inspection on Wednesday. They also had an inspection on Thursday. No one from the pool management company contacted anyone that I know of in Merrimott. I had multiple calls into Jeff Bloom, who is the owner of the company, and to Nicole Williams, who I've been working with and talking to about, you know, what's going on with the pool and the fact that we would like to have an adult manager down at the pool, and that we were trying to find one, and so she has known about this since June. So, over multiple calls, I called Bill and let him know, and I also called Mike Lockhart, who is the person that I, we are considering to hire for the pool manager position to next year. That, one of the things that we talked about in our meeting on last Thursday was his resume, why I would like to have him, and why he is a really good candidate for this position. So what happened was, they should have, what Tom told me is they should have left worksheets saying, stating how the pool failed. It was a Friday, the gentleman who did the inspections, Adam, was actually off on Friday, so he did not get his paperwork onto the computer so that Tom could read it to me and tell me what happened. So he said, I apologize, I'm going to try and get ahold of Adam and find out what happened and how we failed, and if the pool should be closed because of it. So he called Adam, Adam said that two pools, the flat pool and the baby pool failed. I finally got ahold of Jeff, and in this time, Mike Lockhart and Bill Brown went down to the pool, and Mike did a test of the water, there was absolutely no chlorine in the water, none at all, it read, it didn't even read it. The P, there's also an acid.
When was that, when did he do that?
Friday, about 6 o'clock. So there's also an acid that gets put into the pool that basically, and I don't know the name of it, and I apologize, I'm trying to learn all of this stuff in the last couple of days, and my head hurts. So there's an acid that's also in, supposed to be put into the pool, there are these very large tanks that are down in the pool, maintenance part of the pool, and they were empty, there was no liquid in them at all. So the acid that's supposed to be put in, the two parts acid, one part, two, one part acid, two parts water, and these are, these are supposed to be pumped into the pool along with the chlorine. They were empty. What the acid does is it keeps the chlorine alive, and so that, when on like hot, really hot days when the sun's out, the chlorine basically dies, this acid keeps it alive. And so what he was saying is, what Mike was saying is that what happened is, since there was no acid, the chlorine was dying right away. When they were down there, none of the pumps were turned on, what the pump that went from the baby pool, there's like a line that goes from the tank to the pump, that line was dangling, if the pump had been turned on, it would have just pumped the chlorine onto the floor, so it wouldn't have done anything. The other problem is that one of the breakers, the way the baby pool is set up, the lights for the baby pool are on the same breaker as this pump. This light, this breaker gets turned off every night, and has been getting turned off every night since the pool opened in May, it is never supposed to be turned off. So the kit, no one down there knew that, which is a big problem, so.
I'm sorry, did Mike know that because he'd worked there before?
No, Mike, yes, and Mike told me.
So that's, that's part of this institutional knowledge, it just vanished.
Yes, yes, exactly, that's what we talked about at the meeting the other day.
Why would they put the breaker for the light on the same thing as the pump? Pump has to run continually.
So the kids, and that's the, and one of the things that, after talking to Nicole, who, like I said, I have a very good working relationship with her, she is great.
And Nicole?
Nicole Williams for Cincinnati Pool Management, she knows what she's talking about. I did not get a call back from Jeff Bloom, I called him multiple times, I tried to call Mandy, she was on vacation, she did text me as soon as she got it, and she was great, she's like, let me try and find this out, and I'm sorry, we're on vacation. Jeff Bloom finally called me back about 8:00 on Friday night, and he said, there's no problem down there, and I said, well, yes, there is, because we failed a report, and he, he told me that he was not sure what it was, he thought that three pools had failed, but they came back on Thursday and said, we're fine. And he, and I said, I need the paperwork that was supposed to be at the pool, that is, when the inspector goes, they are supposed to leave all of those papers at the pool, they are not to be taken out, yeah.
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Sure. I thought you were going to say, you're rambling.
No, no, I was curious, do they do, I mean, my recollection of pools is like, every hour, somebody gets some tubes together and does.
Yes.
Is there any record, did any of that's been done?
No. There, I, excuse me, I misspoke, there's about two pages from the whole summer.
They're incomplete and random.
They're random. So yes, they're supposed to do it every one to two hours, take a test, and I will get back to that, because that's one of my points that I have a problem with. So Mr. Bloom finally called me back, I said, I need the reports, where are they? He said he had them. I said, told him, I need a copy, I want them back, and I want to see them, so that I know it is safe for the residents to go in these pools. Well, I can't get them till you to Monday because we're closed.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So at first, he said there wasn't a problem, and then he's like, but here's, here's the reports?
No, no, he never said, here's the reports, he said, I wasn't going to get them until Monday. What he told me is all three pools failed, but then they came back Thursday, and two of them were okay.
But how did he, how did he explain himself when he said originally there wasn't a problem, too?
Because the, the, on Thursday, the inspector.
Because he thought it had been resolved?
Yes, he thought it had been resolved, and I said, I am not comfortable until I see those reports, I want the pages, and he said, you'll get them Monday, and I said, no, I want them now. So he kept putting me off, he said he didn't know what was wrong. God love Mike Lockhart, I talked to Mike, he's like, let me call him. He explained everything to Mike Lockhart that was wrong, so he would not explain anything to me, I introduced myself as a councilperson, he would not explain one thing to me, he took, he told it to Mike, which is great, because Mike knew what he was talking about. After that, after I got off the phone with Mike, I called Jeff Bloom back and said, I want you to bring me those forms, and I want you to meet Bill and myself at the pool tomorrow morning, and he said, okay, he would call me first thing. Saturday morning, I got an email, a text message from him at 6:30 in the morning, and it showed pictures of the test kit, that, and he said, look, everything's fine. So how it got to be, the only reason it was fine on Saturday is because Mike Lockhart went down, turned the pumps on, fixed everything, and did what he needed to do to get the numbers to where it was safe.
Where did he get the acid of the tanks?
They've been bringing it in in jugs and hand-feeding it.
Okay.
So, which is a problem also, because that is illegal.
It's an exposure issue, isn't it?
Well, the, the issue is, is that first, you can do it if you have to in an emergency situation, but it's dangerous, there's, it's acid, there, they can do it, I talked to Adam today about it, he said you can do it, if the pool is closed, you can hand add the acid, they do not recommend it, if a health department person was down there and saw them do it, they would close the pool, that is a violation. They have been doing it all summer long, because the tanks have been emptied all summer long, and Nicole verified that with me today. So that, that, that's that word, so I'm, Saturday morning, Jeff's gone, I call him back, he's nowhere, he's up in Dayton now, call Nicole, tell her what's happening, she was nice enough, she lives in northern Kentucky, she drove to their office in Sharonville, got the papers that we needed, and brought them down, and met with Bill and myself, and she brought Jack, who, I don't know his last name, I apologize, who's in charge of the lifeguards and training, and then one of the managers, who, the way she described her, and this young lady was really good, she was very knowledgeable, but she's like, this is one of my best managers that I brought down to check all of this stuff, and I felt like saying, why didn't you ever bring one of your best managers down this whole summer? You know, and so we talked everything through, the pool was fine, the weather was supposed to be really bad that day, so Bill and I made the decision to go ahead and keep the pool closed, just to be on the safe side, because so many chemicals had been dumped in it on Saturday, and they're like, you know, just, if it was a really rainy day, so it was just, we thought it was in the best interest to go ahead and close it, and we did say on our, the stream that they sent out from the pool committee, that it was because the chemicals were not balanced, so we, you know, we did, we're trying to make sure everybody knows what really, was really going on. On Saturday, I called, the Health Department's closed on Saturdays, I did call Mr. Tom Sterling back and asked him to make sure we have an inspection set for today. I met him down there today at 11:00. I talked to, Nicole was there with Stephanie, who was, Stephanie is, does all the mechanics for Cincinnati Pool Management, and she's, you know, I'm trying, I'm talking her through everything that Mike told me, and she starts arguing with me that that's not possible, and I'm like, I'm, I'm not going to argue with this, you about this, I trust Mike, I don't, I don't, he's not going to tell me he did something that he didn't do, please stop, and they were, she was very defensive, Nicole's never been defensive, she's like, I'm sorry, this is going on. The other thing that was a little bit of a concern was that, and this I found out today, when you're dealing with this acid, you have to be 18 years old, you cannot touch anything that has to do with chlorine or this acid unless you're 18 years old. And so what I had asked Nicole today is which, and what this, Stephanie, Stephanie had told me is, and this goes back to their training, is that when she showed me the pump and everything, she showed me two buttons that they're allowed, that anybody down at the pool, management or otherwise, are allowed to touch, and I said, well, what if something else happens that's beyond the two-button rule, and she said, we don't trust anyone else to touch anything. So it's like, so you've got all these people down here that have no idea how to deal with an emergency, no, they're supposed to call the office and we'll send somebody down. So it's like, great, okay.
Is their office staffed seven days a week?
No.
So on the weekends, when the pool's most heavily used, they're not?
No. I mean, you can call her, and they'll get back to you eventually, but no, the office is not open on.
Do they have like a page, do they have like a paging system or something?
That's why he said he couldn't get me the paperwork I needed, because the office is closed on the weekends.
Did we ever get the paperwork?
Yes, Bill's got it.
Okay, now, but did, was Adam supposed to post, does he post it anyway?
He has now.
Adam would post.
Adam has posted it now, so it's on the Health Department website.
So is that public, is that part of the?
Yes, all of it's public.
So have you looked at that?
Yeah.
And we failed?
We failed on Wednesday.
But not on Thursday?
No, we were fine on Thursday, but so.
Did Mike go there Wednesday and fix it, or?
No, Mike went Friday and fixed it.
Friday, okay.
Jeff, the owner, told me the wrong information. All three pools never failed, two pools failed.
On Thursday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, so he didn't even know what he was talking about when he was telling me, when, well, he told Mike, he didn't tell me.
So they failed on Wednesday, somebody intervened Wednesday night or whenever?
Somebody did, yes.
Okay.
To fix it, and then they came back, so the same inspector, Adam, came back on Thursday, and that both the pools passed.
And that's, that's in there, that's part of the public record as well?
Yes, yes.
So I have a question, so if you're supposed to be continually testing it on an hourly or, you know, every two-hour basis, they're, they're basing their decision to pass it on one moment in time, one test?
Yes.
Okay. So.
They're, they're.
So if somebody had dumped in, just theoretically, somebody put in a lot of chlorine, it would pass.
Yes.
But the, but the sun would degrade.
Yes.
Or the rain would dilute.
Yes.
The, yeah.
Yes.
So it's, it's really just a snapshot, it's not a.
No.
Reliable metric of whether the pool is safe.
Because from what Mike has told me and Adam has told me, that a pool can just, it could be fine at 10:00, at 2:00, it could be a disaster.
Believe me, I know.
So, yeah, you have, yeah, you have a pool at your house. So, and going back to the, the thing, the testing, so the people that we have as managers were promoted from assistant managers to managers this year, and they were both 17 last year, so they have never been taught how to test the water, and I asked them about this today, because they're employees of Cincinnati Pool Management, they have their birthdays, they know how old these people are, they assumed, that is exactly what she said, assumed that these girls knew how to test the water.
Who said that, Nicole?
Nicole.
So is that why that it hasn't been being tested, because they didn't even?
They assumed that they were doing it. They assumed that they were doing it.
Did they even know that they were supposed to be, these, these girls, they were supposed to be doing it?
Yeah, they knew, they, yeah, they knew that they, as the managers, they were supposed to be, somebody down there was supposed to be doing the testing.
They never were shown how.
But they were never shown how?
No. They have never trained anyone at our pool this summer on how to test the water in the pool. The only people that have been doing it are the employees that have come over from other pools that knew that they were supposed to do it. I'm not sure if they ever told the girl. I mean, I assume, that's the thing is that you're going to assume, but you know, for, to say, and to, this is the thing is that I want everyone to know is these, the, our kids that are down at that pool have done the best job that they could in very bad circumstances. They were not, you know, they had, if this, they weren't given any training at all on how to do, I really don't think they probably got any at all. And I'm, I don't know that for sure, but I would bet money that they have not been trained. None of them have been trained.
So where do we stand now?
I have talked to.
So the testing is taking place now?
Testing is supposed to be, yes. They're going to train them. They're supposed to train everybody that's 18 how to do it. They have put, they've put a, a message by the breaker saying, and I don't remember what breaker number it is, don't turn this breaker off. It's right by the, the breaker, whole walls now. So it says, don't turn this breaker off at night. They are going to put a note on the table saying, you have to check the pool every two, one to two hours. They said that they will get down there this week and train as many kids as they can how to test the water.
But they have to be 18?
They have to be 18.
Um, is that, is that a law?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's a state of Ohio law?
Before the health, I, I think, I don't know if it's just Ohio, but yeah, it's a health department.
Did they fill the tanks?
Yes, they filled them on that.
So the acid has been replenished?
When you say they.
Nicole had it delivered.
Okay.
The, the test logs, do you have those?
Test logs are at the pool.
Do we have those? Do we have copies or?
No, I can go down and get them.
I would, let, let's scan those and get.
Okay. And we have the forms now of the.
The result.
Inspections from Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, Mandy know, I talked to Mandy a couple of times today. I talked to Ted, Ted Beach Saturday, talked to Terry Donovan Saturday. I've made everybody at the, on, as many people as I could on the pool committee aware of what's happening. I talked to Richard Ford today because he and Bill are going to go over the invoices that we've gotten for, I believe, July and August to try and put a monetary number on what they haven't done. So that on, we have a meeting set for August 18th with Cincinnati Pool Management. I don't know if Jeff Bloom is coming or not. I know Nicole will be there. Randy and I are going to be there from, uh, the safety committee.
What day is that again? Sorry?
18th at 6 o'clock.
August, okay.
Mandy is going to be there and possibly Ted Beach. He's on vacation, is traveling that day. So he may not make it. And then Terry Don, I haven't called, but it's, Mandy's got, she knows she can be there and she's been keeping logs and stuff of everything that, that they've been missing and things like that. So I think it's, if we can't have Ted, it's good that we at least, you know, that Mandy, I'm happy to try and find somebody else from the pool committee to sit in.
Can they, is it, is it an official committee, committee meeting or?
No, because we don't want to say in public anything about what the invoice numbers are and things like that.
That's fine. So can some, could he zoom in then? Since it's not? Yeah.
He's, well, he's coming back anyway, like, well, he's in Tennessee.
And, and Mike Lockhart's going to be in the meeting.
So one other question is, so what should the protocol have been if there's, I take it it was a surprise inspection, right? Or was it a scheduled?
Mandy's asking Jeff.
What the, okay, so.
Yeah, what it should, what they should have done.
What the protocol is.
Because what Jeff said is that he told Mandy and it was her, her decision to close the pool on Friday. What Ma, Mandy did close the pool on Friday, but Jeff told her it was because of the weather. That he was calling everybody.
So Jeff makes the decision as to whether or not to close the pool?
I'm sorry?
Jeff makes the decision as to whether or not to close the pool?
He is, he, he is supposed to be able to and the mayor's supposed to be able to. And the mayor did tell Mandy at one point that she had the authority to do it also. But they closed the pool at 9 o'clock in the morning on Friday. No other pools were closed.
Yeah.
So the board of.
I called.
So let me just, this, let me just clarify, let me just clarify something really quick.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
So.
So what hap, so to your point, and thank you, because I don't know all of this stuff, like I said. So I thi, what I think, and I do not know this for sure, but I think that Jeff knew that there was a problem on Friday morning. And he called Mandy and said, you know, we're, we've got really bad weather coming. We should close the pool. What do you think? And, you know, she's going to say, well, he, you know, he knows.
Exactly.
And when I called Nicole, I said, what other pools were, and I asked him when he was on the phone, what other pools were closed on Friday, if that was what, you did it for weather? And he said, there was a couple in Montgomery. All of the pools around us, sorry, all of the pools around us were put on a delay. Every single one opened.
So my question is, if you fail the inspection, the, the department just leaves it up to your discretion? Whether you're going to close the pool?
They won't. So what happens if you fail? And the, the two guys that are, that I have worked with, they will do everything to fix the problem. They're not like, there are some inspectors, and Tom's explained this to me, that are be like, they kind of get like a little power hungry and they're like, you want to shut everything down if you fail something. Tom and Adam aren't like that. They want to fix it.
They want to keep you operational.
Yeah, they've done that with me at the farmer's market. Like they'll go, this is what you need, so this person can stay. Go to Kroger's, buy water, get soap, so they have a hand washing station. And they will stay there until I get back from Kroger's. And Tom and Adam do the same thing with the pools. They will tell you this one time, if you will, like he said, they've had this happen before where there's a chlor, like the thing has got too much chlorine. They'll close, they'll say, everybody needs to get out for an hour so we can do something to fix it. And then you can all get back in.
I have a question if I can, too. Back to the testing. I get that you have to be 18 to handle the chemicals, to correct the problems, to add chlorine, to add the, I think it's muriatic acid.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, that's, and again, that's the buffer so that the chlorine doesn't. But I don't understand why you have to be 18 to test unless it's because they're using the drop, those drop tests. But I don't know if you.
I don't.
I had a pool back in the day and I hated that because you dropped too much. They sell, and they're out there, just tabs. And you can get a tab to test for chlorine, free chlorine and another chemical. They've got them up to seven different things depending, bromide depending on what you use. And all you do is you, five seconds, hold it at level for, for 10. And then you've got the side of the bottle and you just match up the colors, just like you do for the red and yellow drops for chlorine and I guess, I guess chlorine and free chlorine.
Yeah.
Two different.
They have the, the little tubes and dots and stuff. It's a little plastic.
Do they get watered with drops in it?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm just thinking if they switch, because maybe that's it because you're, you are messing with gingers acid and that.
Well, and.
But if they had those strips, there's no reason.
No.
A capable.
I didn't even know they had strips.
Well, are the strips acceptable for, you know, public pools as opposed to private pools?
Because they're, I mean.
Well, and I don't know, I don't know if, I would think anybody can test the water.
Right.
But what they were saying was is that since they're not allowed to actually touch any of it. They can't, they can't do any of the other stuff, so I'm not sure if, I don't know why they're, you have to be 18. But I don't think.
I question that.
Yeah, I don't.
Whether they can, I think that's a load if they can't test the water. They can at least run a flag up the pole being adult.
Yeah, I mean, that all of.
Grocery store, kid can't scan beards on there.
Yeah.
So they, they got to get a, an adult.
And I, you know, that's the thing is, I don't know how much of this is true and not.
So Leah, could you just quickly summarize, okay, your, your next step? So you're going to meet with, you've met with Mike Lockhart and you're recommending? Or is there a recommendation regarding him yet?
That we should hire him?
Well, I think.
Not yet, no, not there yet.
So the 18th, we have, there is a meeting with Cincinnati Pool Management.
Yes.
So, uh, the mayor and Bill, the mayor and Rich are going to put together their strategy of, here's where you have breached the contract.
Yes.
And we felt this is safe. I'm assuming that this, this paperwork that, or whatever that, that Mandy has, she has given that to Rich and the mayor? So that they can put that into their analysis of?
I don't know that she's given it to them yet because Richard just got back.
Yeah.
But she knows, like I said, she knows about the meeting and she knows that he needs to see her log of what, everything they have and haven't done. So yeah, she knows about it. I don't know if she's contacted Richard. She's met with him before.
Yeah, I, I, we just need to, and I'm sure you and I will talk in the interim, but we clearly need to know what we're going in with.
Yes.
You know, because we've not paid for July, we've not paid for August. We've got one payment left.
Right.
We're, you know, we're in the 13th hour of running the pool anyway.
Right.
You know, at this point, you know, we, we had talked about next year and some posturing for that. So I think that, and I'm sure we will all get together, you know, strategically, look and be united front on how we're going to approach this.
Yes. And I do believe, one of the things that we talked about with Richard today was that we would, for this, just our own peace of mind, I would like, part of the contract is that they have, is that Cincinnati Pool Management is supposed to close the pool. I want to take that out. I would rather, I feel more comfortable if Mike Lockhart would close the pool with help from volunteers or help from the staff that we have for this year.
Again, I, and first, I'm going to back up by saying, thank you. I know, you know, you pretty much spent your weekend doing this, so.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I appreciate it and, and I know it's, it can be consuming. But again, I think we just, we'll sit down and we'll get our strategy. I agree with you. I'd love for us to close it. To me, you know, this goes back to, we lost 30 years of institutional knowledge like that. And we had zero plan, uh, to make up for that. And I think we've been paying for that all summer.
Yeah.
And until we address that, and you brought it up in, in our last meeting, the culture is different.
Yes.
It needs to be our culture, not anybody else's culture. So.
Well, and I think the assumption was that, you know, Cincinnati.
Pool Management had that institutional knowledge. They have not demonstrated that.
No doubt.
Yes. Yeah, no, and I believe that's correct because when I talk to Nicole, it, it's like night and day talking to Nicole and Jeff. Nicole knows everything under the sun and Jeff's like eh, you know, his attitude, he was rude to me on the phone.
So we've got the meeting set up for the 18th. In the interim, they're supposed to have people down this week, teaching people how to test? And the logs are going to be kept as they should be kept?
Yes.
And who's, who's going to be looking over their shoulder to make sure?
Me.
Okay. So that'll, that'll hopefully keep us.
Yes.
Operational.
Yes.
Until you guys can have your meeting.
I am going to call them every day until I know for sure that they have done training on how to test the water. I will call them every day until we get a yes to that question.
Okay.
So, and I just want to echo the thanks. I have so much gratitude for your leadership in the space. So I want to briefly just ask, so to ensure the safety of our residents, is testing now hourly? Even without the training, is testing now hourly and being documented?
Probably not.
Probably.
I don't know right today if it has been, you'd have to go down and look at the logs.
Is it hourly or every other hour?
Every two hours.
Every two hours?
Excuse me. So is testing every two hours?
During the time that the pool's open?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not. I'm sorry?
I would, I would throw in their bath load. If it's 100 degrees and there's.
Oh, 100 people, yeah.
Then you need to more off because the chlorine is going like that.
Yeah. That's what they said, is that when on really hot sunny days.
Hot days, but also on, on the bodies.
Yeah.
So I guess, do you feel confident that we have what we need in place to protect our residents? Right now?
No.
So that, should the pool be open right now?
Yes, the pool is.
Should it be?
Safe?
It's safe.
I think.
But there's not a protocol to make sure that that's, at this point in time, there's not a protocol to make sure that's the case.
And less she, what Nicole told me is that she is going to handpick the managers to be down there for now. I don't know if that's true or not.
So it's basically on us, AKA you, to follow up on.
Yeah.
Well, it's almost like you have to check the log.
Yeah. So we're going to, we are going to have to have like someone from the pool call me every day until we're sure that they have done this.
If, if you've had a pool and if you've lost it, have you ever lost your pool?
Yes.
What happens?
It turns green.
A green, well, that's one thing, but also when you think you've got it balanced, you go back a day or two later and it's gone. It swings wildly until you get everything, all the chemicals, the pH, everything is, is there. It's going to be.
So it's just still being a swing space?
I would, yeah, I, they better be testing. I'd, I'd make sure they're testing it, that you want one of the numbers. And it kind of tracks, you know, because they have to add, you think you've got it, it's like, oh, wait, maybe another five pounds of this. And a pool that size, it's more like 50 or 100 pounds.
To Susan's point, if you don't test the water on, if it's the hourly frequency, you shouldn't have the pool open. Because you have to prove as a municipality that it's safe to be in.
Yes.
If you don't have data otherwise, then it should, it should be closed. Is my opinion.
Well, and what, I mean, that's, I, if we want to vote, that's what we, I don't know what to say to that. I think you're right. I don't, I don't trust Cincinnati Pool Committee as far as I can throw my house.
I'm not suggesting to close the pool. I hope it's immediately rectified, but they've got to understand that having data that shows that the pool is safe to swim in is a basic expectation.
Yeah. Yes.
If they can't deliver it, we, we need urgent, urgent means.
It's, it's written in their contract.
Yes.
Well, yeah, but we see.
It sounds like we need to follow up though. Sounds, it sounds like we need to have.
But I, no, I do not trust Cincinnati Pool Management.
All right.
So I guess, I, I'm not clear who the governing body is here in this space. So if, if we have, if, I, I mean, I have concerns that our little ones are in there and it's not safe. So what do we do? I'm not clear what the next step is. I mean, how do we, how do we ensure that they're safe?
Well, Susan, I would agree. I think there's a lot of, a lot of liability hanging out there right now for the village and for Cincinnati Pool Management Company. But I don't know that we have enough data right here and now to say, hey, this pool is not safe. We should close it for our citizens. You know, we just don't know.
Right, in the middle of August.
And I know Bill's off now, but somebody's going to take the laboring ore and make sure the day in and day out. Because we kept, hey, they say, but we can't trust Cincinnati Pool Management to do what they're supposed to do. So we as a village, we've got an obligation to protect our, our citizens. And I don't know who that person's going to be that's going to take the laboring ore, Leah.
Well, I think normally it would be the mayor, but like you said, he's not right now.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody else in the.
Somebody's got to take it, you know.
Well, but he's been, I mean, you both have been all, all over this.
Right, yeah.
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 But she's got a full-time job.
Yeah. And the park board and the farmer's market and a kid. But the one thing that I did want to suggest, and I don't know exactly how we go about this because I don't think Jeff Bloom is going to be forthcoming with the information. It is actually a franchise. So he purchased a franchise and so then, at one point, he had said, and I think Randy, you, you can, um, back me up on this, that someone, the big guns from Atlanta were going to come down?
Oh, yeah.
They never did. They were never, Bill never talked to anybody, but we need to figure out who the franchise, the mi, I don't know what you would call that. Who is the franchiser?
There are two strategies.
Angel investors or something, I didn't know.
Is the pool open right now?
Yes.
Okay, do we know it's safe?
As of 12 o'clock, yes.
Okay.
So that's when I left.
So I think there are two conversations, there are two sets of conversations here. There's the immediate and then there's the long-term issue, right? So the, I guess, the first question is how do, what is in place to ensure that, again, it sounds like it's even more important after it's zeroed out that we test it every two hours, that that is happening? Can we get a commitment from Nicole that it is happening every two hours and that we're going to get the daily logs emailed to you? Or is it, um, I'm not trying to be extreme here, I'm, I just.
I think we need to be extreme.
So, but there's that, there's a short-term need and then there is a conversation around the 18th. But yes, that would be, that would be my concern. It's August, you know, this is.
Do you think it's extreme? Because you, you know more about this.
You should probably check, it should be checked every day. If.
Well, what is the health?
I'm the tax guy. I have no problem running down there if you guys, if you need to. I need to see the log.
Yeah, yeah, so, actually, what they could do.
I would be happy to take you down there tomorrow.
Well, no, but what, what they could do too, Leah, is they could literally just take a picture of it, right?
They could take a picture and text it to you and say, here's, here's, yeah, send every day, every day, somebody down there takes a photo.
But I don't know when they're planning on, on training these kids.
That's my concern though.
Then you shouldn't open the pool until the-
So we need to, we need to shut it down unless they are there with the tests every two hours.
Yeah.
I would call Jeff and say, Jeff, you got two choices here, you get it tested every two hours or you shut it down.
And you prove to us that you're testing every-
Correct.
Or maybe Nicole, she seems to be more responsible.
Whoever did it, say, you know what, Jeff, you have the contract, solve the problem.
Yeah.
Well, my question goes back to Saturday, he sent you a picture of the test kit, right?
Yeah.
Is there proof or was that that whole?
Yeah, really?
Was he standing by the kit that says Marymont or was he already?
It's like when- It was Marymont, but I-
It's like when they kidnap someone and they make them hold the day's paper.
All right, so, let's, let's try to wrap it up.
So I, I don't, I don't know what the, I would say that, I don't know if I have any say in this, but that if they can't show testing every two hours, that we need to shutter the pool till they can at this juncture, and then we have another pathway.
It's our responsibility to do-
Yeah, I, I think that's a consensus of everyone here, I mean, it's a good idea.
And then so, and they need to provide that on a daily basis to somebody, whether it's Leah or Bill, or, I mean-
Bill, Bill should be back tomorrow, the day after tomorrow.
This is the one Mike was most interested in, because he said that.
Yeah, Leah's got a full-time job.
Look at it, Leah, there's something terrible about this.
Just have him, to Bill every day. Every day, take a photo, do I do, at the end of the day, at the end of the day.
Chuck could be our new tax commissioner.
All right.
Let me pull, sure.
So then who has the right, so then, the mayor will shut it down, if it's not, if we're not getting to- He's not here, we can volunteer him for that, for breaking the hearts of our kids.
All of our children on a hot sunny day, yay.
Let's, let's, let's let Ed, let me let Ed.
Yeah, here, what I was gonna say, Joni, call Bill about it, Bill's not capable, if he's not feeling well enough to do anything about it, ask him, I think Chuck has volunteered, who's obviously never in the army, so, so he knows he never should volunteer, but Chuck, go down, you know what you're doing, and then you can report to Joni and then she, until Bill gets back, and if it's not, it's not proven safe, we shut it down, if it is proven safe, we keep it going.
Yeah, I just introduced to whoever I need to know that I'm not just some guy showing up, basically.
Yeah, we can, we can go down tomorrow, they open, there's somebody there opening it, I think at nine.
But somebody needs, needs to introduce Chuck, are you gonna introduce Chuck to him?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm gonna take him down.
They showed me the logs.
But I know-
Give him a holster.
I do know they will definitely be there at 10. I don't know what time they get there in the, but I know they're open at 10.
All right, so, so we have a plan, do we, do we need to keep discussing that, or can we, you'll figure it out and we-
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Then I have one other question, so Mike, is he a volunteer in this?
No.
He's been.
He's employed at another pool right now.
He's not a village employee.
No, he's not employed.
So just the, empowering Mike to shut down the pool, I'm nervous about just-
No, Mike's not gonna shut it down.
Oh, I thought you said that giving him the ability to-
Next year.
No, 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 next year.
Oh, next year.
He's gonna be hired, yeah. We've not hired, Mike is just doing this because he's not-
But he is gonna help close it at the end of the season.
Yes, yeah, so, and Joni and I talked about it.
Daily.
If Mike is hi- if what he would be doing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we will hire, like as a contractor-
Yeah.
And we will pay him, like, we'll do that, and then once he's hired as an employee, then he will be, so in the fall, he'll be a contractor, in the spring, he will be an employee of the village.
And the committee will go ahead and provide a recommendation about all that.
Right, if that is the recommendation, then vote it on.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, is that, are we finished?
Hey, can we add, can we add to the task list for Village Tree Plan? Seems, I mean, because I, I think it'd be great to have that.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, you can put it on there if you want to, but I mean, I've already had, I've already had the discussion.
Just do it.
I mean, I've already had the discussion, sure, go ahead, put it on there.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, you did a lovely job tonight.
You did a lovely job.
Yay.
You really did.
Meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned.
Good girl. Good job, Marsha.